Evening, everyone. Welcome to July 10th Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, the company or organizational meeting. First, wanted to thank the staff at the town office. We're running a good special town meeting the other night. It was put together well.
I will pass that along.
Yes, please do. Going to go down to elect chairman, and before we do that, I just want to say something. Ethan, this is your third term that you're starting, and I think it's only fair and time that you take the reins, so I'm going to make a motion for you as chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Third.
So moved.
And now I will.
What are you doing to me? Just getting used to sit next to Jake.
Make a motion to nominate the vice chairman, Jimmy Janassi.
Discussion. All in favor?
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Vice Chair.
You, sir. All right.
Now, we have to decide the date and time of Selectmen's meetings. I know at some point, we were throwing around the idea of make, starting the meetings an hour earlier. I just wanted to put that out there so people remember we talked about that, but whatever. Worth the pleasure is.
I'd like to make a motion to move our meetings to 5:00 PM. Start.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? All right, and as far as the date, we'll still keep the same format we had before, which is what, first and third, Monday? All right. We need a motion for that as well?
It's up to you if you're going to change it. We know, I mean, if you're not going to change it.
Okay.
We'll know that you're going to keep that same.
All right. Notification procedure for special meetings. Help me out with that, Joe.
This, Mr. Chair, has to do with, if you have a meeting like tonight that falls on a time or date other than your first and third Monday, if you have more than three days' notice, you would be upset with that, but if it's an emergency. So if you didn't call it at your last meeting, or something came up in that first meeting, the procedure for that is you would, we would post it in the normal places, and we would also let the newspaper know. And if you do that, you've covered the FOAA requirements for an emergency meeting. If you're going to do it, scheduled meeting at your regular meeting, then you've covered those bases anyway, as long as you've got three days.
Is there something we have to adopt?
Nope, it's just a kind of a, unless you're going to change that.
Right, that's what.
All right.
Can I just add something there? We've had a lot of discussion over this past year. We took a straw poll at the town meeting this year, and I just wanted to make a motion to set the format for the next year's annual meeting to a secret ballot.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, Robert's Rules of Order. That's what we follow in here. Need a motion to adopt. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next up, we have to appoint the town's legal counsel firm.
We have currently, Mr. Chair, a retainer with Freddie Flaherty. The way that that is written is that as long as they are appointed by the board, the terms of that agreement will remain in force. So there's an hourly rate for the attorneys. The retainer portion of that, I think it was $2,000 a month, for certain list of services, and then there are services that are outside of that. So if you're still satisfied with Freddie Flaherty, you can reappoint them.
And that moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next in your binder, there's a series of town policies and trainings. You have to sign, sign all these, get them back to Tracy. I do not have mine signed. When does she need those back, Joe? As soon as possible.
Yeah, at your next meeting.
Yeah, what am I missing? Everybody needs to have FOAA training. You can do that online, right, Joe?
You can do a refresher online. It's as easy to do as reading the website, the FOAA website, end to end, and then sort of add all the material on that, or you can have a more advanced class if you'd like.
Okay.
All right. All right, let's jump down to number nine. Annual review of fees, vendor fees as a bullet.
Vendor fees are in there, Mr. Chair, just kind of as an attempt to get them on your radar screen. The last time they were revised was 2017. I don't know if you feel these are still relevant, or if they should be updated.
Okay. All right, do you want to, we'll put that on agenda, upcoming agenda, we can talk about that. All I see on the organizational meeting, anybody else have anything to add? Oh, well, it's in a motion. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right, that concludes the annual organizational meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order at. I have my watch on tonight. We've already done the pledge of allegiance, so I don't see the reason to do that twice. Conflict of interest, just gotta speak up at the time that you notice one, if there is one. Public to speak on a non-agenda item. Ethan, all right. Boards and committees, we have minutes from the budget committee, the suror commission, planning board, and the ordinance committee. And we also have on this, and taking motion for those.
Make a motion to approve the June 16th Board of Selectmen's minutes.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Also need to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's Comprehensive Plan Committee Joint Public Hearing on June 18th.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Budget Committee Joint Meeting of June 23rd.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Budget Committee Joint Minutes from the 26th of June.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? I'm used to doing all the talking and then flipping my binder at the same time, so I have to revisit. All right, we have number seven, we have some consent items. First up, liquor license for Rangeley Health and Wellness for the benefit concert.
Motion to approve a liquor license of Rangeley Health and Wellness for the benefit concert. I don't think there's any stipulations on that.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next, we got an event, two event permits. We got the walk to Bethlehem for the RFA.
Motion to approve the event permit for the walk to Bethlehem for the RFA. Number seven, they are on, on it.
Second.
Discussion. Favor. Motion passes. Next, we have the Aquasic Day Festival, and Janet Coob is here.
Here only because this is our first event permit.
Okay.
I came to the town last fall because I heard a rumor that we should get a permit. So I said, okay, so I came to the town, talked to the police chief, talked to Tracy, the manager. And I'm telling you this so you know why I'm here. They said, you really should have a permit for this. Never knew it. It's been going on for 20 years. But I'm okay with that, just so you all know. No harm, no foul. I never wanted or intended to go under the radar. It just grew into something bigger than anyone ever thought. So I completed the application, I obtained insurance. I think it's filled out in its entirety. If you have any questions, I'm here because I don't want there to be any gray area.
Appreciate that.
And I have no problem with applying or anything. Had I known that there was rumbling on the sidewalk before this year, I would have been.
I never heard the rumor, Janet, so.
Well, of course.
I didn't even see the file.
But I, and I apologize if there was any misunderstanding, because that's not the way I operate.
No, no, we appreciate that.
So here I am, and if you have any questions, and again, it's grown into something that, when my mom started this 20 years ago, it was five ladies in a pot, what's that?
Yep, sure.
And now it's a lot. So water skaters do have insurance. I have procured insurance. The only thing that was brought to my attention was the water ski show being a concern. They're insured. They're an official organization and entity. It's, it occurs on Mission Lake, but they take off for private property. The property owner has no qualms about that happening. He's a juror. So I can't figure that there's any loophole that would be a concern for the town. And also, the police chief last fall, for lack of a better term, maybe his blessing, instead, I don't see a problem. You're doing everything the way you're supposed to do it. So here I am, if anyone, as town fathers, mothers, have a question, please bring it to my attention so that I don't want to hear about it, you know. I'd rather hear what is here.
Well, Joe, as I see all the correct signatures from the police department, fire departments, do you have any qualms about this?
I don't have any issues. I do appreciate coming in with it.
Thank you, and I don't mean to over elaborate. It's just, I'd rather be transparent and come right to the surface.
This is helpful for all the folks listening on air, especially the arts and services folks. Now they know the date and time, what's happening, what's happening.
And if they have any questions at all, I am absolutely available and free and willing to answer them for them. And actually, that goes for the concert too, that I'm a culture of. So if there's any questions, just, I'll be happy.
All right. In that case, I will make a motion to approve the event permit for Aquasic Days on August 16th, pending park commission.
Second.
My last question. We need the pending park commission.
They just have to have their blessing. I don't, I don't.
They haven't seen it yet.
I don't think they've seen the permit.
That was a little concerning.
We got two members here, so I think, I think we're good. Can't speak for the other three, but I think, I think we're looking good.
Fair enough.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, next up, the Blueberry Festival.
Motion to approve the event per, excuse me, event permit for the Blueberry Festival, Rangeley Boosters, pending certificate of liability, and the park commission.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, next up, we have vendors licenses, one for the Rangeley Boosters. Has to do with the Blueberry Festival. Is that what I'm looking at? So, all right, make a motion to approve the vendor license for the Rangeley Boosters. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next, gourmet mini donuts, Richard McMahon.
Make a motion to approve the vendor license for gourmet mini donuts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Yes.
One question.
Right.
So, understanding that we're approving vendors licenses currently in this meeting, and if we discuss vendor fees in the next meeting potentially, do we, how do we know if these people have potential cost increase or changes?
So, Mr. Chair, these folks are actually going to be, this event that they're going to be at is 12 and 13, so they will fall under the existing.
I'll see what you know. Stop acting like you're a grandparent, not retro, so don't mind.
It was a good question.
It wasn't too bad. Prior to.
Yeah, right? Free donut might help me out.
Very good question. In fact, they came in and made their payments today, and I went through the same exact process in my office.
Excellent.
I don't.
All right, folks, next we have appointments. We're going to start with the airport commission. We adopted bylaws recently, so we should be able to make decisions now.
We'll make a motion to appoint Larry Coob. We pushed him for 30 days last time we met, so they could have a forum, and just want to extend his term for three years.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. We need four of these, so we need three more.
We have to make a motion to appoint Marshall Sweeney for a three-year term, expiring on 6/30/27.
Second.
Discussion.
Under the new criteria, the non-resident property tax owner, if it's true of them allowed, hold status.
Right.
Does he own property in there?
I don't know the answer to that. Is that a stipulation in the bylaws? Must own property? I don't have them in front of me. The motion's been seconded, and we'll get some more information.
I think that was the wording we both ended up signing on, that there could be up to two non-resident.
Yep.
Property owners.
Yeah, that part I don't remember. Go ahead, Joe.
So the new language is the five members of alternate volunteer commission composed of at least three residents and up to two non-resident taxpayers of the town of Rangeley is nominated by the standing commission and appointed to stagger three-year terms by the Board of Selectmen. Upon expiration of a member's term, that term can be renewed for additional three years.
So that sounds to me like Mr. Burrow, that's correct. And I don't know, I don't know his tax status.
Unfortunately, I don't either. I apologize for that. I didn't. We didn't ask that question when, when the applications were.
I'll resend my motion for Marshall Sweeney.
Okay.
And make a motion for William Gomet, Donnet, Gonnet, yeah, Gonnet, for a three-year term.
Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Make a motion for Ronald Haynes as an alternate with three-year term.
Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Make a motion for Neil King as an alternate term expiring 6/28.
Discussion. All those in favor? That wraps us up for the airport commission appointments. Actually, I have one for the H.A. Fergus Trust.
Motion to appoint Tracy Lavoy to the H.A. Fergus Trust, and ending 6/30/28.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to appoint Nick Ledley to the Haley Pond Ad hoc Committee, one-year term.
Discussion.
So this would be our second member currently on that committee, right, Rick? So we think there's not a lot of interest, or just, I want to say advertisement, but it just hasn't been pushed out community-wise, no, no, no.
I think once we get these appointments done in the next week or so, we can put a blast out at what's available for openings.
Okay.
Just, yeah, just curious.
Mickey, oh, sorry.
All favor? Motion passes.
Make a motion to appoint Leo Seminera to the planning board, term expires 6/30/28.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Motion to appoint Robert Wil, Robert Ryan Wilber, joining both appeals, the term expires 6/30/28.
Discussion. All those in favor? 這次 Next, we have a tower reserve purchase, $12,300 for repeater system upgrade. We have a letter here from Chief Bacon explaining that. Joe, do you want to go into that?
Sure. We've had chronic issues with colored works, repeater not being able to reach out into the closet. Chief Bacon helped troubleshoot that for us with Hussey Communications, did that together. And what Hussey did was he found a piece of equipment that he took out of another facility somewhere that we put up on a trial basis to see if that, in fact, was the issue. He put it in the system, and it's worked very well the last two or three months it's been in there. We don't have to buy it. He's done the troubleshooting. He's happy to charge us for that service and take it back, but I think it makes sense to leave it up there and purchase that equipment from him, since it's already in place.
So I mean, you're saying that if he takes it back, then the repeater doesn't work as well, right?
That is correct.
Yeah. Personally, I don't see a reason to make the repeater not work if it's working.
Yeah. And it's a savings, so we're buying new equipment, as the letter shows you.
Yep, refurbished system.
And the tower reserve, just so everybody knows where that's funded from, that's funded from Horizon Tower, we sell back here.
Okay, that's right.
At a future meeting, you'll see information on that lease. Horizon's reached out to me, and it's interested in reviewing that. Totally separate project.
Yep.
I've got a little bit of the details, so I'll break into it. That's a quick revisit.
It's been, what, six, seven years, six years? A little more.
Yeah, so the original contract was like 20, five and five, I thought. Anyway, I'll bring it back to a future.
I'll be quiet. That's how that's funded.
Just, yeah, repeated that before. This one is going out on 17, that repeater is, or Knob Hill?
This one is on Knob Hill.
And then, so the future, is there a need, just, just curiosity, is there a need to revisit the one at Chick Hill and the one, the other one, to just have a on duty to reset the two sites at least?
I think this clears it up.
I just, it takes care of it. But, but does it, does it take care of it if something happens, some incident happens to that one? Would it be, what Keith's saying, would it create redundancy?
Or should we, or should we visit redundancy?
That's what I mean.
The same token. Should we find a higher point at Chick Hill and then bring up another? I'm okay with this right now, but is there, is there a need for that? Now we have more area, and obviously, technology has graced us with this area. Is there a need for us to look at?
I don't think in the short term that there is, but I think in terms of long-term planning, yes, I think we should, we should be looking at redundancy. Making sure that there is a plan B in case that goes down or something.
All right, folks, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to upgrade the repeater system, $12,300 purchase from the Tower Reserve Fund.
Second.
What's my Jim? Second by Sam. Any discussion?
Sorry, I was getting out of myself.
All those in favor? Motion passes. All right. Doesn't look like there's any old business. Let's have a new business. Talk about the July 7th special town meeting.
This is a placeholder, Mr. Chair. The agenda was put together prior to the meeting, so we just want to make sure this was there. I think we could use this as a spot to let folks know who are listening, or now, or I'm going back, that the police budget that was proposed by the Board of Selectmen, it was 91877, I believe, passed 8/36 at the town meeting on Monday. So we are back to normal operations, but the chief and I have spoken, that, you know, this is a number that's less than we came in the door with, so we've got to be vigilant about sticking to that. But, you know, we're fixing the cruiser that we kind of had on the back burner for the last two or three weeks. Chief's pay raise has been implemented. I've taken care of that paperwork, and everything else is pretty much back to normal there.
All right.
That's the update on that.
Do you want to run right down through this, so I don't?
I'm happy to do that.
That I don't have to keep.
So the, the next four items are construction products, and we'll give you very brief updates on. Quasic Park Phase Two was an item that passed at due chance town meeting, the funding for that. Wright Pierce has been actively involved with the Quasic Park Phase One. They haven't done any drawing or anything yet for Phase Two, other than, you know, some budget estimates that got us to the town meeting. Main Street, so I think I'll do them all as a group.
Yep, do it anyway you want.
Main Street sidewalks design, Wright Pierce has a plan set. It was put together a number of years ago. And they also have the other satellite projects on Main Street that they can roll into that plan set and then put out to bid. That's one that we could move pretty quickly on, if the board's okay with sticking with Wright Pierce on that, and I would advise on this project, they do, just so we can get it out the door.
Keith?
Obviously, understanding that project and how Paul Racking goes, discussion wise, I would feel, I would hope that, you know, as he goes into bid, we start the construction, but I would hope that we can at least show that that South Main Street, or I guess Northern, no, whatever. So from the shed down to Little Lake, right, I would hope that we could start there, based on prior comments of why put money into other parts of sidewalks, but that one is disrepair. So I just, I think for the public to see that we are taking care of a little old issue before we approach, you know, this resurfacing, we'll say, that, or whatever, whatever those satellite ones are.
Got you.
Yeah. Not necessarily, I can't write in conjunction, but I just hope we have a large focus.
No, no, I agree with Pete that that part of the sidewalk's been, been, been disrepair for a while, and quite a few constituents over the years have asked me about it. And a lot of it's, a lot of it's gravel or some kind of dirt and not pavement at all, so, yeah.
All right, so one more, sorry, one more part of that, Joe, and this is a discussion I'm having right now. You and I have no enough to state, but I still have, I do want to revisit, one concern I do have is as if, as we bring that sidewalk to just the standard of ADA and everything, there's still that drainage concern, which I know we are going to fight that hand in tooth or hand in foot, whatever, how that thing goes, with property adjacent to the lake. So I just want to make sure we can somehow clear, clear that up in the state, in property orders to help push that water. Or direct that water where it needs to go.
Yeah, I'll try to incorporate what we can into this project. I have shared the notes from our visits to that area. They're not long, but there's pictures, notes with the new region engineers, Mark Keen retired, Peter retired. Shared that with him, so he's familiar with the concerns there, but we get to that.
And then I would also, in conjunction with that, when and if that development happens across, that's just going to focus that much more water into that section. So understanding the velocity that potentially can come down, even though they're going to have their setups with intention of anything, but I still think it allows a more focused energy coming down those points. Not to get into that project too much, but just.
No, 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 that, that was my point, a few, I don't know, a few years back when we first started talking about it, is to speak with DOT, because that's the biggest problem, in my opinion, where that sidewalk is, is the lack of drainage, or style of drainage, or age of drainage, whatever it is, that's what messes with that. It floods out every year. Same, did you have something?
Yeah, would it be okay to, while we're working on those sidewalks, to address the crosswalks at the same time with the?
Or is this stayed separately?
Separately, or when they have like little inlays to where you would crosswalk it from builder's supply? I think they wanted one.
I think that would be the only one that we could visit, if it's my knowledge, because a crosswalk has to have a landing point. There's no sidewalk between basically Fernland's Great Lakes Salon and the builder's supply on that side of the road.
So the base project is the kind of the sidewalk that Keith talked about. There's another section of sidewalk from Lake Street back to outline shop. Hopefully, we can relocate the outline sign.
Yes.
That's our conversation today. It's been a while. An ADA parking stall in front of Sarge's is also on the list, and then the builder's supply crosswalks. We're kind of bundling some of these things. Orbiting us here for a while.
Sure.
Trying to tie them all in one package. The good news is, all of these elements, Wright Pierce's, they've got them all. They've drawn most of them. They just really need to get them in the one unit and get it out to bid. This is one of the. and get it out to bid. This is one of the I think we probably ought to hit first, just stick with Wright Pierce, so I can get it out there.
Is the, is the OI shop, was that, is that under new ownership or is that?
It is.
So the new business?
Yeah, I don't.
We have to revisit with the new, new owners, that's all.
I know the company name, but I don't know.
I, I think it's been touched on, but I, it may have been a previous owner.
Okay.
I just, we talked about crosswalks and signage and all that for downtown. Last I remember, I thought we talked possibly about bookending Main Street with the flashing.
Yep.
Signs on the table. So I don't know if that gets called into that or if that's something.
Yeah, I, I believe the drawing, the construction drawing for Bills by has those signs up there. We have the, cover a lot of ground, we have the sign that got run over, that's him, the one up by Saddleback.
Yep, right.
Get that scattered of the public works. The other thing that I've asked our engineers to not let me forget about is the fact that we're supposed to have DW dash whatever signs that show the extreme crossing at each crossing.
Yeah, yeah.
And you don't necessarily have to have a rectangle with flashing beacons, but whatever.
Though I agree with that, sure.
I've asked him not to let me forget. You need to roll that into the project. It's going to change the, the look slightly of downtown, but.
What are the, so Joe, just again, I don't want to get too far, maybe too past each part of this, but what are the requirements for those signs, like distance from the crosswalks, within a hundred feet?
Yes, yeah, it's got to be closer than that.
I knew before, like I recall, right, like the motorhead one, she had the flashing beacons on the other side to be at least within a hundred feet of that sign, wasn't short of this.
Yep, so those are also on the list. So that's one project that I think we can get out of the door fairly, but.
Jim's go.
And one, no, just one other thing, and the state was installing one of the speed limit signs that is lit up around it. Was that, you told me that last year?
They're going to do two of those, one of the Quasic, one somewhere I think up near Dallas Hill.
Okay, yeah, I thought.
I haven't heard anything new on that, although I think I've seen some new, relatively new signs up there, one that says names one of the roads on the right, again, I think that's a new sign.
Owen?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
The other thing that DOT is, is doing, main DOT is doing, that required us to move the poles was they're doing some EDA work up there, they're tipping downs. Our sidewalk, they're doing work for us, which is helpful. It will forward it with down. So that's another reason to get this one out the doors, going to the cap, because I believe DOT intends to do construction this summer.
So, so do you plan on having that on the next agenda or something?
If I can come back to you with the design costs on this, I think we paid a lot of them already, but there'll be a little bit extra you know, getting that packaged up and sending it out. Tonight I'm looking for your general, general feeling on what to do with the engineering crawl forward these projects. So I think we've wrapped up Main Street, public buildings needs assessment that passed the town meeting that was to be taken from assigned fund balance. It's a little under forty thousand dollars, I think high thirties to get that done. That was based on an estimate from Wright Pierce. That's as far as they've gone, we've shared, you know, kind of the scope of what they would cover for that. And then transfer station improvements design, I think that's a bigger project than, than some of these other ones. And I always, obviously I want to work on that one, but I think we need to revisit that, possibly put in RFQ out on that. We do have a budget number that Wright Pierce gave us.
Since that has to do with sanitation and all sorts of environmental things, is there any?
I heard any.
Are, are there any great, uh, grant possibilities or something?
There are grant possibilities, but I asked that question, actually, here's some food for thought on this, Wright Pierce voluntarily said, here's a couple of programs that you know, you can, you can apply to, I don't remember the names.
Yeah.
That's one of the benefits of working with them, it's kind of like working with Freddie, you know, we have a relationship and they know what we're doing.
Yep.
So I guess to boil it all down to one question. We've already, I think we've already answered the Main Street question, but for these other projects, is the board, would you prefer that I release an RFQ for these other projects for engineering so that other folks have a chance to chime in on it, or are you comfortable with moving forward with Wright Pierce? Two or three decades.
So one, I, I already have a very open opinion on this one, but just to clarify, so the transfer station is that, has Wright Pierce been the primary engineer in most of those projects for them, do you remember? For the, to the transfer station?
Uh, they've, they have given us an estimate on what it would take to do scale, yes, they did a capital needs study for us, which included scales and some of the other upgrades that need to happen. So they have a pretty intimate, familiar with, with the site. They've done some other ancillary things like structural assessments we had to build and get bumped into that they, they looked at. So they're familiar with the site, they're familiar with, you know, what the town has as a platform there and kind of where we're headed. I, my vision for like a transfer station, I think I've talked about a little bit publicly is I think we may want to consider going with a little bit bigger scope there. What Wright Pierce was talking about was kind of upgrading what's already on the ground, building a new building. I don't think we have the capacity to handle the waste we're getting there. I think we need to plan for the next thirty to fifty years.
So, so on that, you answered my question perfectly. I'm not always the shopping around for other projects, but I, I'm firm believer in building off of what we've, what we've worked with. Wright Pierce has proven themselves in my opinion, not, and I know there's cost differentials between other engineers. I think they have such familiarity with what we're, our project we already have. But again, maybe in multitude of the transfer station, maybe it's worth looking at an RFQ for that for other services or other individuals. But I think in the basic, of the other projects listed here, I would be comfortable with, with Wright Pierce. This is a sign note real quick, transfer station wise, I don't hear a whole lot of scuttlebutt about much stuff in town, but I will tell you, transfer station this in the last two weeks is been very interesting and the feedback I've got, not necessarily positive in any way, but I just think that's going to be a very important project to move forward with this and get it designed and, and something conversation wise as best as we can. I mean, obviously pushing the project back, but I think having them open discussion publicly, touching ever working on, it will be a good start to kind of put some fires out.
Yeah.
Yep. I like what you said about Wright Pierce, I have no problem with them either, I just want to make sure, I know we have a policy for purchasing and whatnot, there's no policy for for engineering to get qualifications from, we don't, we're not required to.
We're not required to, to, to put these out, if you're satisfied with, with the service of, of a firm that you're working with, you can, you can stay with them. I just want to make sure we can come back by this.
No, I was thinking about that as well, um. The sidewalk, I'm going to kind of echo what he said, the sidewalks. Things that they've done preliminary, preliminary work on already, I don't want to hold them up any longer. I agree with that. The transfer station though, I, I think that, that might require an RFQ because of the magnitude of it, and I, I know Wright Pierce is a large company and they're all over the place, but there may be certain engineering firms that are more specialized in sanitation and that sort of thing, so I, I would like to, to give a chance for other people to put a quote in, plus if you don't make people sharpen their pencil and you just keep picking them, then it, it, sometimes it can, you, you can just pay whatever they charge, and I don't want to do that either.
But I'm surprised, because probably I'm saying that magnitude we have to go now, like our, our industry is growing, greatly is growing faster than we probably imagined, and then obviously look at, when I go up there now, there's never an outline. So to, to help facilitate the needs of that project, I don't think it's just a rebuild of what's there, it's definitely
No.
A large growth.
I, I agree, I think we need to go back to the drawing board almost, and, and I do agree with the urgency of it because I think we can let it go too much longer, we can operate this in parallel, this time, and it, it is seasonal fluctuations, there are times of year where we we can't really, we can't keep up, but it's, it's a challenge.
Yep.
Volume that comes in.
Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with you, Ethan, I agree with the scope of the project, and I think it would give the taxpayers more confidence periodically these things.
Sure.
For an RFQ or that, you know, that way, shopping around and, you know, trying to get the best value for the dollar, getting the best input we can as well, you know. Like you said, some firms specialize in this type of thing and may get to the end line quicker because of that specialty.
And, and I'm more, personally, I'm more of an opinion, even these other things, I, I would have put out to, to bid, but we've been waiting for some of these things for a while and they've already done work. And I'd like to get those things moving for the public. Anybody else?
I can go all day long on the transfer station. I just think, I think that, that's the thing with that one for me is I like to, wherever that plan is, I'd like to look at alternative options. For the idea of what's, and I would say it'd probably be a very large cost upfront, but if we can look at the future, understand if we can stop them, like eliminating transportation down, down the mountain, so whether it's consideration ourselves or something like that, our own way to, to actually facilitate trash in town and not have to look around. I think we just look at a large scale revamp.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully maybe make some energy off it or.
I agree with that.
Or whatever, or alternative.
And I think this is, is one that, you know, we should brainstorm in, brainstorm with staff, you know, be like, and get the public, you know, input on it too, to see what they're thinking.
Yep, but I mean, in, in that regard, like Keith talking about different ways of disposal, if, if we do get far enough into it, or, or even at the beginning, beginning stages, maybe we can have some short presentations on how these things work, see if they're feasible or not.
Right, it might become a regional thing where you start looking at. Those other communities that are around us that can, I think, you know, it's about our plantations or whatever, then maybe need more from what they have also, so.
Alright, so I think I have clear guidance on this, Mr. Chair, I will work on RFQ for transfer station improvements, the other items, I'm going to give a green light to Wright Pierce on it and bring you back, you know, the costs associated with that at the next meeting, so everybody's wide open about that.
Last on this list, we have board of selectmen goals for twenty-six, was that put in as a brainstorm session or what?
It's kind of a place to, usually the first of the year, it's, it's helpful for me, it's usually helpful exercise for your folks to talk about what the board goals are. You have individual goals, you can kind of voice those and then talk about it as a group. You don't have to obviously pin them all down tonight, but it helps me know where you're headed, where you want me to head and lead the staff.
Do, uh, maybe do we all want to write a couple of things down for the next meeting? If we have anything, then, or, or give them to Joe privately?
Throw my two cents in right now, we're doing the needs assessment, I mean, which is, which is huge, obviously, I, we've talked about it in the past, whether it's hurting this building or public safety building, moving the town office is something else, but that's something I definitely complimented that and the transfer station, two big things I want to look at this year.
What'd you say Jimmy, sorry, Mr.?
I'm sorry.
What was the first thing you said?
With the needs assessment coming up, looking at this building and keeping it as public, public service or public safety and moving the town, however that's going to work, but seeing what's what.
I agree.
I, I think I'll, I'll echo those two for sure, transfer station obviously kind of hard, and I think that's very important. And I think if we can revisit things that have been laboring for a number of time, whether it's the old con plant or whatever it is, maybe it's some low hanging fruit that we can get cleared up, I think that's going to be very important itself. So, which I know I'm not being specific at this moment, because I don't have, I didn't prepare, but.
Yep.
You know, those, those three or four items are plenty to keep us busy.
But we always talk about these monthly meetings with other boards and committees, I really would really like to get onto that, you know, we keep suggesting it, but just keep getting touch with planning board and you know, the ordinance committees and just keep.
Does that go for quarterly meetings too, I mean, keeping those?
Keeping those, yes.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a long meeting, but just so we're all kind of on the same page with the plans.
Uh, figuring out housing incentives, especially for our town employees, or new employees that we're trying to recruit. Let's see. Develop an RFP for assisted living services, maybe need to do a needs assessment for that. And grow our emergency services with the our fire department as well as the EMT. We need more in my opinion, needs assessment. Guess that fits in all of that, so. Oh, and our investment plan, what is going on with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, we kind of stopped with the banking system, I mean, and I don't know.
Yeah, we, we keep reinvesting short term.
Reinvesting short term, but not, haven't done the long term yet.
We can revisit that, and in a very short answer, is you're going to get the best returns on, like, we're getting the best returns on CDOs, but now we get the best return on our sweep account, I guess. We certainly can explore other, other things, typically you see trust funds, like cemetery trust funds, those type of things, you go into more diversified investments. But we can revisit that, I think as a pretty broad statement, we've done pretty well with our returns in the last couple of years, it's at one hundred thousand dollars interest.
Only because we hadn't been doing anything before, but yes.
Well, yeah, yeah, we, we, the ICS.
No, it's great.
Right, the ICS rates runs high. But we certainly can look at that a little deeper, I, I don't know. Again, but I'll get too far into it right now, there aren't a lot of funds that you can tie up long term. Certainly good looking.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Alright, let's move on, number ten, we get some correspondence, looks like two different letters from Monica Lee. Over in your package. Good suggestions, ideas. Don't think we have anything to be written or record, can we, Joe?
Not that I'm aware of.
Town manager report. Did you already do that with everything you just said?
That, that was a, a lot of it, just two things that I, I want to touch on here, then we'll get into the count if I can do this, you don't mind if I?
Yep, just run with it.
Uh, houseboat bill passed, the governor signed it, it does implement a prohibition on houseboats, there are more things, there's a lot of that, but basically if, if business doesn't have, or houseboat, maybe business, maybe not, doesn't have a submerged land lease from the state before January first of twenty twenty-five, they're, they're not going to get one for a houseboat. So that was the grandfather provision, and then took two or three extra sessions for the, for the, like the coast that poured through. So that is in effect, currently, there was a letter in your packets that came from a, a visitor to town that wanted to offer accommodation to Simon Adams, this person was in town, went to one of the establishments, unknowingly, his wallet in there, didn't realize until he got back, we were staying, had to leave the next day to fly back. Had important documents in there that were necessary for the flight. Didn't know how he was going, the business was closed the next day, long story short, Simon Adams contacted the business and got them connected, they got it taken care of, so I mean, it was an, an excellent example of community placing customer service. And I just thought I'd pass that along as a, as a positive thing.
Yep, good.
Obviously want to publicly thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
And then the calendar, one thing that, that now that the special town meeting that happened on Monday has been completed, the board might want to think about moving the August nineteenth special town meeting back into September.
Yep, what was, what was the previous date tonight?
It was September ninth, but that, because today's the tenth, I would not recommend that day, I would recommend September sixteen, which I think is Tuesday, that gives you the sixty day step back. And that would obviously be a secret battle.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, so we move that. Alright, is that it for the calendar deal? Do you have anything else you want to touch on?
That's, that's pretty much it.
Alright, other business, we already talked about the floating structures, do you want to touch on it again? No, we already, you did all that.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have anything for select board communication? Seeing none. Looks like we have something to do in executive session tonight.
That would be my evaluation.
Yeah.
Make a motion to, we're going to an executive session, MRSS fatal one, chapter thirteen, subchapter one, section four oh five six, personal matter.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? I figured Jimmy was going to say in his motion.
Alright folks, we're coming out of executive session at six twenty-six PM with no action taken.
All right, folks, we're coming out of executive session at six twenty six P M with no action taken. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion passes.
All right.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you.